I think so. Sam. Ready to hear us? Alright. Good evening, we call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board for August twenty second, twenty twenty three to order at six thirty P M. We do have a warm. Old Business Cemetery Committee updates. I got your email, thank you, it's wonderful, I haven't made it up to Hammond Hill yet.
Yes.
But I will make it up there.
So you can get the G P S coordinates.
I will, yeah.
Well, I've been doing Google Earth and Google Maps, because they each do a different one.
Oh, okay.
Getting those on others.
I'm gonna write that down here, yeah.
It's completely.
Yeah. So. How should we proceed from here? Uh, it sounds like. The cemeteries need some, you know, T L C. Yeah, yeah. And I know we had discussed. Potentially asking the beautification committee if they could help out or just reach out to the public and see if they were.
We thought that maybe the churches.
Yeah.
Who like to do community service. Some of them don't really need too much help at all, but. Like. The ones in East Buckville, that church could take them over, just show them they're like, we have people.
Yeah.
Some of them would. That was just me, Justin.
Okay.
I have a fantastic book piece working on here. Well, our hope was to go to all of the small cemeteries and maintenance sheets on them. And as we go, we're taking pictures and getting the coordinates, so you can see how. What needs to be done and how badly they need to be done. It's not completed yet, you can take a look at what we intend to do. And we'll have it here. I can't, the pictures are too big to send them an email to get a good. Feel.
Yeah.
For what they are. When we're done, we will post them all to the. Buckfield Historical Site, so anybody can go out. We'll have that hard copy upstairs and Kim wants one downstairs. We can move one for him. If you'd like, go to the way back and look. At that cemetery, because that has military people and is atrocious. I can't help. We found, we uncovered the Vogelstang Cemetery. It's up on Laurin Hill and there's five graves there and we researched who they are. So that we know where that is, you don't even have that. In the town office.
I've heard of it.
Nope. Wow, I knew it was there because the historical, there's a. Is it the Leaning Rock? The, what's the name of the rock? Balance. The Balance Rock is up there, so and we had had a good. Description of it and we went off looking for that and we found a cemetery. But those have military people in there and. There's not one stone that's standing and most of the military ones are broken and leaned over and they had no flats. So nobody is getting to that one.
Alright.
And. The Prince Cemetery has. Had stones, I think Linda gave you that up there.
Yeah.
And then the Buckfield Cemetery, the old ones. Uh.
Yeah.
Say. If you go back to the old emails. What we had children were working on, planned to do. All of those had the descriptions of what we felt needed to be done. We look for deeds and we can't find. Just the name of cemetery, it's the only one we can find. We found a note. In the, in the old cemetery book that. Found that the name of who donated the land of cemetery. But he didn't say if it went to the town or cemetery association, so we're still not sure. But um. We, we went back through and if you look at all those, we believe that. The town should know who owns the land around them or them, because in some of the old deeds it says that. The cemetery is part of the property. And some of them don't say that, but if we're gonna send people out there to work on these cemeteries, we should at least know. The surrounding landowners, so they don't think they're just trespassing, if they want, they not know. If there's a cemetery out there or. To me, I think it's theirs.
Right.
But there are state laws, I believe, that. We have had in. Voted in, in the book that. If, if their family or abandoned cemetery is military people, it's the town's responsibility to take care of it.
Yeah.
So those are the big things, but if you go back and repeat those, it'll give you a good description. Everything we felt needed to be done.
Okay. Yeah, it's just cleaning them up, that's. That's one thing, but then repairing stones, that's.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Hmm, but I mean, identifying them first is the big step and then, you know. Possibly um. Give to fundraisers or. I don't know what this brings, whatever, but.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything available from the state for that. He would hope with, for military burials at least, but.
Hmm.
I don't know. But, yeah, not sure I have a receipt either, right?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But basically, our intention is to finish identifying what we can and what we can get to.
Yeah.
And then handing it over to you, because we don't know the laws either and we don't feel comfortable trying to send somebody out there. To the ones that. Coming to God's country that.
Yeah, right, which could be privately owned, you know?
Right?
Yeah.
So.
In some cases.
So I guess we want to put it basically in your hands and if you have questions and if we researched it, we know the answers and. We'll have everything that won't be. Available whenever anybody wants it.
Yep. No, this is fantastic.
Yes.
Really is. And. I mean, I'd like to see us come up with some kind of plan to have ongoing. You know. Care, we can. And I'll put the funds to do it. You just have GPS coordinates for where they are, it's a big, yeah.
And I have made lists of, I was in Mount Fetticoat that. I won't hand over as long, positive, I got it all right, at every cemetery with written description how to get there. Both G P S and tax map numbers. And you'll be getting that also.
Okay.
So, yeah. Maybe, they had old descriptions, but they put roads and, and. Benses and gates are now gone and so.
Right.
These new lists will be wonderful.
So this is. Under Title thirty eight, Section thirty one oh four, these ancient burying grounds are considered abandoned cemeteries, a cemetery in which no burial has been made in the previous forty years, and the lots of grave sites of which have not been maintained within the previous ten years. Except for maintenance rendered by the municipality in which the cemetery is located. Under the statute, an abandoned cemetery may be formally acquired by a municipality, but many are reluctant to do this due to legal and financial obligations. That was just a quick search, but there's thirteen hour.
And thus we need to identify if they're ours or not.
Oh, that's the other thing, you know.
Yeah.
What did the town? Formally.
Corner.
Acquired. I mean, obviously, we know Damon.
Yep.
Hmm. That's the only one we found deeds to. Or any written information that says that the Cemetery Association turned it over. Hmm. So.
It's consistent. Regarding ancient burying grounds, municipalities are only obligated by state law to care for veterans' graves. And that care only extends to mowing the grass and keeping the graves free of debris, weeds, vines, and fallen trees and branches, and then obviously the flags. Um, yes. Under state statutes, municipalities may also care for non-veteran graves, again, only mowing and trimming brush and weeds only from May first to September thirty. It's actually good, but I think I must hear this.
Well, this is incredibly comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Have you guys seen anything, has anyone cleaned in stones or?
Well, we. Can I try to stop through?
Okay.
Found the Vogelstang and then heard Viv went back and. I had been there about five years ago when there were ten foot tall.
Yeah.
Trees growing in there and they cleaned that up at Brown Rock and. Um, I had been to the Slawn Cemetery because the churches are relatives to mine and there was a. Big tree down over the stone wall and branches and we cleaned the branches that week thirty five. I guess, I mean, if we haven't been there this year after those bedroom stones, you know, the pictures that I had, it's all gonna be worse.
It's like.
Not see anybody cleaning stones anywhere.
Now, yeah, there's a bit of science to that, I think.
Well, they changed the, because I tried to clean my victims' stomachs, old stones and. Well, depending on the type of stone, you do it one way and then when I started it ten years ago, it said you could use a bleach combination and now they say, oh, don't use bleach. You know what I mean, so.
Right.
The weather then forget it works very well on the white ones and just a. Um, bacon soda paste on the gray ones that they have moss. It'll dry that, well, you have to have lots and lots of water. To wash it off with, so if you're out in the mud, it's kind of being can.
Yeah.
Carry gallons of water and to wash them, so. Hmm.
Alright. Any thoughts on moving forward about? They would be great to see some, you know, like the churches or community come together and be able to help us out that. As, it is a, I think, big expense, just. You know. The upkeep, but if we could at least clean up around.
Right.
And identify stones, then. You know, that would be huge and you guys shouldn't have to do it alone.
We're not.
You're not, you got, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna ident. Tell you what it is. Then from there, we keep, I mean, we have all we can do to try to keep the upstairs.
Yeah.
Where it needs to be for the historical, so.
Yeah, of course.
But uh.
I mean, the biggest thing for you. From a municipality standpoint is determine, let's for us to determine what. But we, I'll, I'll put together, I'll do some research, whatever, but. Um. The town's, we're gonna start with what's our bare minimum responsibility, because we need to make sure we do that, again. Try to encourage. Volunteerism.
Yeah.
Um. And, I mean, there's a lot that we focus on just along that Damon Cemetery. Uh. Especially, like, you know, when we're talking progress stones, stuff like that. There's a lot of people in there that pay for perpetual care. Most of them, some of them are marked. And I mean, it's marked on the map, but like, I think. At the very least, the veterans' graves and the ones that paid for perpetual care need to be the town's focus. It's not gonna happen overnight, because we have to have a hundred thousand dollar a year. Cemetery budget and that's not gonna fly.
Right.
Uh, you know, repairing stones isn't cheap and you wanna make sure it's doing it, it's doing it. He knows what they're doing. But I mean, I think that's what the board should start with, is looking at. What you have to do newly, or what we have to do newly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I hate to put any more on your plate, but you know, I can research now a little bit and just so we can.
Yeah.
Move, move ahead on it and, yeah, and. Um, I'll try to pull up some of the law stuff you have for the next week. And maybe, uh, some money. Just get the word out to folks that, you know. At least ground cleaning would be. You know, helpful.
Yeah, some of the stone walls are falling in. Uh, the good thing is a lot of them are in shady areas and a lot of it is moss.
Yeah.
So there isn't a ton of tall grass and. Trees and. But, I mean, there's. It goes both ways, but there is a lot don't look terrible, even though they have got, okay.
Yeah, typically, what the municipality has done prior to. Now. Uh. Is once a year, the ones that I guess you know about, that aren't way out in the bin sticks. Or God's country, like you said, so. The Public Works Group does typically go out in the spring and clean out, but like you said, the windstorm and stuff, who knows what happens, you said. Because most of those cemeteries are moss, so they really don't need, need mowing, weed whacking. Um. The big cemeteries, you know, those, those are being taken care of. As best we can with all the rain that received it, do we whack in a cemetery and it rains the three days straight and it's.
Yeah.
By the time you get them on the rest of the town, everybody's saying, we're doing a terrible job at it, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we get a huge grid budget that we're trying to keep this maintained and. It's tough.
Right, and it's, is that the only active cemetery?
That is the only active cemetery.
The rest are all, yeah.
So, and the other thing, and I'll go on the record saying this, because this has been frustrating the heck out of me. Damon Cemetery is a huge cemetery. And if people put a lot of, like, flowers are one thing, you can pick those up and move those out of the way. If anybody puts a bunch of stuff on their loved one's grave. We're probably just gonna weed whack around it, because we're not gonna be responsible for. For ruining that stuff and there's no way. I can have guys out there pulling that stuff up, weed whacking and putting it back into the drain, so I would encourage people who have a lot of stuff on graves. To probably maintain around the stone themselves. If they wanna keep it, keep the grass down, because that's just, that's too much.
Yeah.
Especially in the old, the newer section.
Yeah.
You know. Where the people passed recently, those ones with, there's some. Interesting setups on someone else's grave, so.
Yeah, I see that there's lights.
Yeah, and those break easy with weed whacker strings, so I'm trying to stay away from them.
True.
Since.
Very. So we're moving forward, thank you very much.
You are very.
We really do appreciate it, this is great.
Thank you.
Morning. Well, it makes the town look nice and it's historical information that you just can't get back, that's.
Absolutely, that, that was our big thing to begin with, we wanted to get to all of them in. Court, because in the seventies, the historical society did a wonderful book and. Thank gosh, they did, because we had that to go by.
Right, yeah.
But we wanted to update it, then we figured that we couldn't maintain them, so.
Right.
It came to you.
Thank you, have a good night. Alright, new business. Consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Do we have anything we want to discuss about the town manager's report?
Yes.
Um, key takeaways.
It's been a year.
Since I did a town manager's report?
Oh.
Oh, I was gonna say, it hasn't been that bad.
Been here.
Yeah, I know, Saturday. Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Um. So the Drewbrook Crossing, as most people know, is complete, obviously hasn't been paved. Uh, paving on Bear Pond Road. We're hoping will take place this fall, but with all the weather we've had, Spencer's behind on projects, they seem to think that they'll be able to, but. We never know with the way the weather's been, um. We, that project ended up going over budget, thirty five thousand dollars roughly. Because when we got the grant two years ago, I mean, they were proposing that the bridge was only gonna, uh, that, sorry, the concrete was only gonna cost. Thirty nine thousand, built for the concrete came in at like eight one. And that didn't even include the concrete work between the bridge itself, the ground and all the curves and everything, so.
Unfortunately, there's no cheaper time to build it this moment, tomorrow it's gonna cost.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, with that, what I would say is, because we are holding this selectman election in, um, November. I would recommend that the board consider putting another Warren article on there. Asking the town to take thirty five thousand dollars from unappropriated or undesignated funds. To replace that all roads, because as it stands right now, we're actually over budget on all roads and if there's a washout, we have no money to pay for it. Uh, because we can't touch the money that's in the bank without their.
And, and it's been a rough year with all the flooding.
I mean, yeah, it has, I mean, Paris Hill, we just, they just fixed that one section that was washed out, I mean, they did the best they could, they dug it up and we cold passed over it, it's still a little rough, but it's not dirt and it's not gonna wash away. But, um. There's some down on Allen School Road, we still have potholes that are gonna need to be passed before they end up, you know what I mean, so. It, I, I think it would make sense to, I mean, there is that money there, there is enough money that I would feel comfortable doing that, I just think that we should consider at the next meeting to maybe. Actually formally have that in.
Okay.
Um. Town Office Basement's been. Mostly cleaned out, there's still the old chair stuff, we can touch that, but, um. Two of the public work, public's work guys and myself spent a Monday. Here, cleaning it up, it was like seven hours, it was gross.
Hmm.
We filled a thirty yard dumpster, pretty much everything down there. Was, there wasn't anything really of value outside of what you guys had, but it was. You were done, it was gross.
Yeah.
Um, we did, we lost, Rec lost four or five bags of soccer balls. Because that water just ate right into them and I, I couldn't let kids play with those, so.
Yeah.
So we had to replace. A lot of soccer balls, um, but overall, that's done, the furnace is gonna get installed. Uh, they're coming to do the propane line and the propane tank. Not tomorrow, the day after, and then next week they'll install the boilers. So we'll have heat this summer or winter. Um. Still working with the auditors, we got our fixed asset. Listing done. Which our depreciation schedule. Um. The tax clerk is currently working, working on thirty shaving notices, so those are gonna go Friday. Um, anybody that still owes a balance on their taxes, receive a certified letter basically saying. You're gonna pay your taxes current, the next thirty days or we're gonna file you. Um. What else? Obviously, she's, she's also preparing for the elections, a bunch of stuff that needs to go into that before we get there. Um, you already knew, I provided you with a financial statement, I went over it with the Budget Committee on August tenth. Um, assessing work's still ongoing, K R T has been here a couple times in the last two weeks, they've been on the field. Uh. Baseball and softball fields, if anybody hasn't seen them, I know Heather has, but, um. We've resurfaced both of those, there's still a little bit of work to do, and we're trying to grow grass on the infield of the baseball field. We leveled out a section of the. Softball outfield, but next year. We're gonna have very nice fields, so. It's half the soccer season, we'll, we're gonna work on, um. Bessie Field as well, and that was mine, that was encumbered from last year, so it's not gonna be out this year, but it. I mean, uh. I'm being told the fire truck is supposed to be delivered this month, but this month is ticking down, so I'm thinking probably September. Um, mostly due to supply chain issues. But they send regular updates to the fire chief, so. I'm confident we'll be soon. And. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Um, on. Disagreement warrants, cost payable warrant twenty four, which is the one I did today, that one has some school payment in it, so that's one side of this. Yeah, outside of that, nothing else special.
Except it's been a year.
It has been a year. You know, town manager for a year.
It's been wonderful.
Longest serving town manager out of the last.
It really has been great.
Yeah, you have done a good job.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that's hot. Yeah, right, I need a second on the disagreement warrant.
We did that one backwards again.
It's okay. We know what you're talking about.
It's hard on to remember.
So, uh, all in favor, Bob, I.
Zellie, I, Heather, I.
The total on that is two hundred thirty nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and ninety one cents. Including the school payment for a hundred eighty eight thousand, four hundred forty eight. Dollars and forty eight cents. Oh, wait, I'm looking here, I'm sorry.
Okay, last.
My apologies. This one is two hundred thirty five thousand, eight hundred twenty one dollars and twenty five cents, and then. This was the school?
School was, yeah, twenty four.
Twenty four, a hundred eighty thousand, one hundred forty nine dollars and seventy five cents.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No worries. Heather was the second on that.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes, someone's here. Oh, hi, Tom.
Hi. So I think there's a delay. But do you want me to participate or just be a good listener?
Please.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Do you wanna, um, include your vote for the consent agenda?
Sure, Sandra, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, approval of minutes for the August seventh, twenty twenty three Select Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August seventh Select Board Meeting.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I.
Heather, I. Sandra, I.
Alright, I'll give you more time, the delay is there, I forgot about it. Okay, C N P poll permit for the Old Sunday Road.
Just like the last one, and you need your approval, uh, it meets the setbacks for the policy for the town, so. It's all in compliance. Okay. Probably do it like last time, just. Make the motion and use the C N P job number. There it is.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the town poll permit. For C N P job number one oh three oh one, oh oh, four three four zero, on Old Sunday Road.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I, Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. So, if there's any appointments. Adrian must be on the Budget Committee.
Thanks, Adrian.
Alright.
Well, then I will make a motion that we appoint Adrian Rivas to the, am I pronouncing that right?
Rivas.
Rivas, Adrian Rivas, to the Budget Committee for a one-year appointment. I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I, Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
I was gonna say, she doesn't like you. Just taking it over.
Thank you.
No. I said, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got it, just took a while.
Okay, that was a yes.
You already missed the section of the trash house. Thank you, Adrian.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Alright. Gerard Freeman is, he's, uh, automotive recycling business, we set a public hearing date.
So, yeah, so I need to put. Well, let me give you some backstory on this, so if anybody knows Gerard Freeman, he's had a garage out on Keever Road for, since I think the eighties or seventies. Never been a problem. If he has vehicles that are no longer repairable or whatever, we'll put him behind the garage and when he gets through or whatever, he'll take him to the scrapyard and scrap them. Well. The state police didn't pay him a visit, because they keep track of the vehicles that you recycle and they gave him free citation saying he was running an illegal recycling business. Which, you know. He was a little blind sighted, but he's been doing it for thirty, forty years and for even more than that, he's never had an issue. So he came in and basically he just, he needs to get a local permit to do what he's already been doing for fifty years and. Then he can get the state permit and be in compliance, uh. But, so it's not like it's a brand new thing, it's just, he's been doing it and apparently now they don't. Like the way he's doing it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I have to put a notice in the newspaper, or we gotta put a notice in the newspaper, send letters to the butters, so I would probably set it. Out a little further than like fourteen days. Just to give us some time. Wow. I'd be on the safe side. I mean, I, I guess potentially, oh no, two weeks. I go for your second meeting in September, that's my recommendation, unless you wanna do it sooner than that, but I wouldn't do it if we could fifth.
Great, so our meetings in September are the.
Fifth and the nineteenth.
Yes, the nineteenth.
And I don't imagine it's gonna be a big thing, so you could probably set it at six and. Pick it with.
Mm hmm.
It's not when you go to our cemetery.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Yeah.
On the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Sounds amazing.
So I may be away.
Oh, are you going to Caribbean again?
I'm going to Nashville. Yeah, for my birthday, which is the seventeenth. Which is also Constitution Day.
Was the nineteenth work for Sandra?
I think I missed something.
Right.
Does the nineteenth work for you?
For public hearing for. The uh, it's the night of our regularly scheduled meeting. It would just be at six o'clock instead of six thirty.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Clear, okay. Nine nineteen. You know. Six P M, and gave a motion on that. Yeah. I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing for September nineteenth, twenty twenty three at six P M. Uh. For the uh. Gerard three automotive recycling business comment.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I, Heather I.
Sandra I.
Thank you. All right. Other business. Did you wanna, the business, the business?
No, as long as you have your review, it's fine. We're outside of that.
We have any other business?
It's the. Quietest meeting in a long time.
I know. Can't think of a salary.
At least Tuesday.
All right, anyone has any other business that will move on to the public comment period?
Get anything.
No public comment, Adrian? Anybody online or you know?
No.
Well.
I guess what I do.
Yeah. And executive session, I don't expect to get. Anyone wants to get a session tonight?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion, will you adjourn?
I will second that one.
At seven oh four, seven oh four. Thank you. All in favor, Bob I?
So yeah, Heather I.
Sandra I.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Quite what? See y'all in two weeks.
We can.